It's March 10th at 4 o'clock and we'd like to call this meeting to order today. I'd like to welcome everyone here and at this time if you'd just stand for the pledge please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have before you a recommended agenda, are there any changes or additions?
No changes or additions.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion from Tom and a second from Darla, all in favor? Unanimous. First on our agenda is a construction update with Tom Lanning.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Would you mind turning that mic on please? Thank you.
Okay, great. Good?
Yep. So as the summary update, beginning with our high schools, this is an aerial view of East Forsyth High School. The milestone we reached today, technically, we are now topped out with structural steel. We have our ceremonial top out with you all next month. We think the weather will be a little nicer for you than it has been. But seriously, over the next, you know, few weeks, roof decking, some of the detailing of the steel leveling and some of the secondary supports will be installed, which really completes structural steel. As you can see, a good portion of the building is now roofed. We have significant concrete masonry units progressing throughout the entire 450,000 square foot building and brick has also begun. While that's the main building, we have significant work progressing on many of the auxiliary buildings related to athletics, CTAE. So now that the weather's clearing a little bit, we're back to significant accelerated progress on construction of East Forsyth High School. That's just a different view. The site utilities are all complete and now we're working with our providers like Sony Power Gas for those kind of utilities coordinated when we open. So this is an aerial view of the Performing Arts Center, now referred to as FOCAL, and in the background ACE. You know, a lot of the difficult work that you really can appreciate the progress on is getting out of the ground, getting foundations in place. A portion of the slab on grade now for FOCAL is in. This is a back view of the foundations for ACE. The good news there is structural steel will be arriving in early April and that's really when you see the superstructure pop, you see some of the significant progress. You know, one of the challenges to get to this point that's really not appreciated is as you look at where we are in the Forsyth County Board of Education building at the top of the screen and then going down the screen, that foundation wall, that retaining wall is 30 feet in height. So we had a pretty significant, great challenge to deal with. Fortunately, that's all behind us. That allowed the building pad to get in, which then allowed the foundations to proceed. But again, you should see substantial progress with the structural steel next month. While this is just a standard view of a corridor, the good news is this is West Forsyth High School's addition, 20 classroom addition obviously helps the mission of, really since going back to the Great Recession, right, we had a significant amount of modular units throughout the district. So this is just one good effort as these 20 classrooms come online next fall. That begins to make a dent as we're constantly challenged with the population growth, but as we build the permanent, it begins to attempt to reduce the number of modular units we have throughout the system. And while there's obviously a huge benefit to the modular units, it's good to get that to a manageable number. This is just one effort to get there. A basic classroom, but did want it to show you the interior shots of that as you've seen the exteriors over the last few months. So the good news there is we are working in the final stages of, I think you know we have two inspection really processes we need to go through. One is the Fire Marshal's Office, we're doing that. The second is with Forsyth County Planning and Development, not only building, but the various disciplines of mechanical, electrical plumbing. So we will be getting all of those finals inspections during the month of March.
Isn't that door wider, are they the new standard?
It, that's not, it depends which room it is and why it's a little wider.
It just looks really wide, which is good.
Yeah, that one is. Some of these are CTAE buildings, but we'll give you a little more of the interior shots next month. So this is the high school narrative and I'll say the positive thing there is we're either in progress or have already completed all of the high school projects. So moving to the middle schools and elementary schools, an aerial view of Hendrix, really similar to what I described with the challenge of getting quote "out of the ground." Significant amount of work at Hendrix has been done the past few months with foundations progressing and steel will be arriving in the next few weeks. So you see in this area, if you remember, this is the administration level, foundations in place. Since this was taken just, you know, February 27th, there's always a lag in what I'm showing you. We do have now foundations being completed at this lower level, which is where the classroom sections are as well as the gymnasium in this area. So you'll see significant progress beginning next month, which is more visual when you see the superstructure of the steel. This is an aerial view of Poole's Mill Elementary School. We are nearing substantial completion. To give you a couple views of the interiors, I think last month one of the board members asked what's the color scheme. So a few things, one, you get more of a natural feel, the stone that we looked at, kind of going back to the heritage of the Poole's Mill area, but really there's two types, the yellow brown that you see as well as blue and a light blue. One of the upgrades we've made to our prototypes, as much as we think there's a real value in the prototypes for a lot of different reasons, cost effectiveness, schedule, et cetera, we are always looking to take it to the next level and improve. So here you do see the LVT, big difference versus the VCT. It's a superior product, it's a good value for the enhancement we're making to all of our elementary schools. And then from a legacy perspective, you don't have the waxing issue and the durability issue of LVT. It's kind of the craze in residential that some of you might have done in your own homes, so it works well in our institutional application. Getting a little character again to the lobby of Poole's Mill, you know it's not one of our other 22 elementary schools. You see that coming together. This is the media center, I demonstrated that, so you see the stone. I was out there today, now it's carpeted, it's painted, so we're just significantly progressing even from the photos of just last week. This is the main hallway that I think most of you are familiar with in our prototype designs. So another enhancement, you see the porcelain tile in the larger sizes. This is some of the natural color scheme that we're getting, but that's a typical corridor out there. This is the cafeteria area and you see the stone underneath the stage area for the base.
Gorgeous.
Kind of makes a nice enhancement. So we'll have some much better photos to show you next month, similar to what I described with the inspection process of the Fire Marshal as well as Forsyth County Planning and Development will be going through that process in April for Poole's Mill. So we're well ahead of the curve on both West Forsyth and Poole's Mill in terms of what we need to do, getting information technology and FFNE in well before the students return in the fall. So from a narrative perspective, some of the middle schools and elementary schools I didn't show you photos of, fortunately now, the safety and security entry vestibules were bid March 5th. Fortunately, we received four prices. We have a responsible bidder that we'll recommend at the next board meeting so we can get materials ordered, the engineering done, hit the ground running on security vestibules as well as, and then the next couple days we'll be getting the bids for Liberty and North Forsyth Middle School on the CTAE. Again, making that recommendation to you at the next week's board meeting. Then the following month we'll have the supplemental eight middle schools with CTA Technology Lab modifications to bring to the board and proceed with that.
Another busy summer.
Yes, yes. So that completes the update. Any questions, concerns on the program?
Very nice.
Looks good.
Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Fine Arts Strategic Plan with Kathryn Keizer.
Before Kathryn starts, I just wanted to say, you remember she presented to you back at the board retreat in January, so some of this is not going to be new to you, but I just thought it was very important that we present in public as well. A lot of folks watch our board meetings online and wanted to make sure we roll this out to our public, so that's why we asked for you to come back.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. I'll try to condense my hour down to 10 minutes. We appreciate the opportunity to have contracted with Lori Shell, to bring her in and bring her expertise to help us through this project. When I accepted this position four years ago, I thought it was very important to build the relationships with our schools and our communities, to figure out where we were as a district with our fine arts programs. And of course, since there is no status quo, where do we grow? How do we take what we have that's working so well and improve it and what can we do where areas that need to be shored up? So the statement of purpose for our plan really comes down to eliminating barriers for students, to increase effective arts programs and community partnerships and make it a quality experience for all students. Why arts education? Of course, there are a myriad of resources out there that will tell you research why the arts are so important to our students. And having been one of those teachers, I can tell you that having students in my class and that was the reason they came to school was very meaningful, that students find a home in our classes and they really do belong to the school when they are a part of arts. In addition to all of the creative aspects that they gain and the life skills and the work-based type skills that they also get from being in our classes. These are some of those pieces of research. So equipping students for success in college and beyond, social emotional competencies which are naturally embedded in what we do, attentiveness, perseverance, creativity, all of these aspects that our students show and can take out into their lives after school. So the methodology behind our process, we needed to gather a lot of information, so we surveyed our principals, our teachers and our students. And then we had a planning team of 30 community members, administrators, teachers, students. And of course, we had the pleasure of having a few of you onboard with us during that time. And that was August and we took all of the information that we gathered from all those surveys and some other information and we worked two very diligent days to process that information and come up with a foundational plan. We then worked with 10 more members of the same group, down to 10, and finished out that plan so that it really fell in line with our Forsyth County strategic plan, our diversity, equity and inclusion plan, and of course, our learner profile. Everyone's participation was highly valued, everyone's voice was heard. We really feel, believe that, you know, we took what we did, we took it back to the administrators and teachers and got their additional feedback on areas that we could, did we miss anything, what do you like about this, what, you know, making sure that we have in place everything for all of our stakeholders. So out of the work came our values and beliefs. We had to know that before we moved forward. When we surveyed principals, we asked them to rank the items down below and the top three were that they wanted our students, this is the principal's vision for fine arts in our county, a well-rounded education that includes equity and access for all students in the visual and performing arts. And then a district commitment to quality teaching and learning and a district commitment to meaningful support. The teachers, when we shared the work with them, what I love is that the word "community" is first and foremost. And I think that speaks very highly to the culture that we have here in our district. The words "ratio," meaning teacher and student to student ratio, is something that comes up in the plan, they were very excited that we were looking at that. Funding, of course, and ways to improve our offerings and expand what we offer for our students and giving greater choice and voice. And the equitable piece, how do we make sure that the offerings we have are equitable across the district? And that just kind of gives you an idea for the teachers. And then of course, with the students, we received some fabulous input from them. And there are a couple of themes that really stood out on this part and that was the life skills and then the community or the readiness for college and career. And I do want to put a side note in here that as far as career goes, that goes beyond just being an educator or the quintessential starving artist or a TV actor or a musician, that there, because our Georgia economy now supports the creative industries and it has surpassed actually agriculture, there are thousands of jobs for students and they require a creative background and a knowledge of the arts and a knowledge of how to work with other people. So there are thousands of jobs out there, how do we help make students aware of these things? So that came up a lot too. So of course, elementary kids, being more confident, less shy, that's kind of that, being aware of emotions. I would like to be a video game designer, that's legitimate, and practicing to be a video game designer. A well-rounded person, I love that, and then will help me get better in whatever job I have. With middle and high school, they do bring up the fun factor, of course, that's important. It's important for our students to enjoy being at school, it's important for them to enjoy being successful and see that success and that's what makes it fun. The relieving tension, finding new friends, discovering new passions, giving them a break from their academic classes. So we know that that's the student voice, that's what they like and appreciate about the fine arts classes. For college and career, with high school and middle school especially, I love the one about being a surgeon because you have to be precise and you learn that precision and band, that is true. And on that one, actually, I think I brought this up before, that there's research that a lot of the medical schools are requiring students to go out and take art classes and music classes so that they gain that piece of empathy and detail, attention to detail. So out of our emerging themes from our work, really equal opportunity and access, excellence, of course, communication with our stakeholders and community endorsement and engaging our larger community. They line up beautifully with our desired outcomes. Again, making sure that we provide growth opportunities and sustainability and how do we go about doing this in an equitable way? So some of our key findings, it's important to focus on the success as well as areas of growth. We have 100% of our schools offering music and visual arts classes of some kind. We are way ahead in that area. We have 100% of elementary students who participate in music and art classes. 86% of our middle school students participate in at least one arts class. Some of our arts classes in middle school are nine-week offerings or semester offerings, so there are more opportunities in middle school for them to have those classes. 33% of high school students participate in at least one art class and a quarter of our high school students complete a pathway, meaning that as seniors, they have taken three consecutive courses in one of the fine arts areas. Music, theater and visual arts are well represented and of course, we have some areas of growth too, where dance is something that came up with students and teachers and the community that they would like to see us look at. And then of course, how do we continue to build orchestra? We also have music technology in a couple of our schools and other non-traditional music genres to kind of capture kids that may not be the traditional art or music student, giving them more personal choice. One of the other key findings in regards to student and teacher ratio is the fact that while all of our elementary students do have music and art in their load, in their academic class load, the number of teachers, we could have anywhere from 700 students to one teacher, up to 1,200 students to one teacher, one music teacher and then 1,200 students for one art teacher. So how can we be creative about looking at increasing seat time for those kids to give them a little bit more access? That was one of the things that came up. In our community, we discovered that our community is ready. Our community is excited about our arts programs and excited to see them grow. The other was resources. Obviously with our growing economic and demographic diversity, we do have some inequity of distribution of resources. So how do we go about looking at that and creating a plan to encompass again, all of those kids to have that equal opportunity? Specifications for construction and maintenance, we know Mr. Work has done a great job of going out and assessing things, what does that look like for our fine arts buildings, our performing arts spaces, which of course, a couple of years ago led to the FOCAL Center coming in. How do we support our equipment? How do we, you know, all of these pieces, our strategic funding for finding ways to fund our programs in addition to what we already have in place and potentially working with businesses and nonprofits? So how can we expand our base of people involved in our fine arts programs? Direction number one is expanding capacity and instruction and learning for all. And I do want to point out, it does say in expanding capacity through hiring and it says special ed teachers. And we do offer, all of our special needs students receive services in arts and music, so they are served. How can we make those opportunities even stronger for those students and ways that can engage them in a way that is also very helpful for them in their life? Personalized opportunities for students and continuing our work on quality professional learning for administrators and teachers. Looking at allocation of supplements and allotments, arts integration, which is actually taking art and music and theater concepts into the other academic areas, expanding our career readiness opportunities, potentially working with the Chamber of Commerce and the creative arts industries, how can we build more opportunities for our students? And then meaningful, again, meaningful professional learning and expanding instruction for our students. Strategic direction two, and this is where the FOCAL Center really comes into play, is connecting our schools and community through the arts. And one thing that really stood out in all of this was the ability to have a connecting source of information that was advocacy, what are all the things going on in our schools and how do we send that information out to the public as well as build those public relationships and bring people in? How can we showcase our community and our arts programs in the community? So creating that business and operational plan for the FOCAL is a big part of that, developing our funding partnerships and looking at internships that we can provide for students as well. Strategic direction three, improving and increasing the quality resources, increasing quality of our resources for the arts, so building and maintaining our arts facilities, again, what does that look like? And the funding streams to help us with that, infrastructure and instruction. We would like to do an audit, facilities audit in some manner, to know what we really have out there and what's working and what isn't. Continuous improvement plan for those facilities, the operating plan for the FOCAL Center and funding, kind of a funding audit between teaching and learning and what other resources can we use? And currently in progress, I did want to let you know where we are, we actually held our first Art Honors Day back at the beginning of February at West Forsyth High School, was very successful. The art teachers really took a hold of that one and ran with it and they brought in college professors, they offered students workshops throughout the day with those college professors. They also talked about what it's like to be an artist in the outside world and what that means and what does it mean to go to, we know if you're going to go to college, this is what you're going to need to do and this is what life can look like outside. So we had our first Art Honors Day celebrating the success of those students, it was fabulous. We are currently in the process of developing the plan for the FOCAL Center. In the next board meeting, you are going to receive an RFP for bids for instruments and that is because of some SPOST funding that we were able to receive and that will help us refresh some of our instruments. So I have all those numbers as well I can give you and provide other course support as needed. And then I've had several administrators reach out to begin discussions on how they can expand their programs in their schools to include some of the things that we have talked about. And so investing, obviously investing in our arts programs, if we look back over the success of technology and CTAE over the last several years, this is just a really good pairing with that. And so being able to really invest in the future of our students and what it can do for our community at large. So the proposed budget was one that I had shared with you and of course, this is just a preliminary, it's a preliminary budget that also is open, obviously it's a conversation, but it just gets the conversation started. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Moreland gets the budget time, Riley.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
No, it's good, it's a very good thorough explanation from, it's a long process from the stakeholder interviews to all the way to this point and it's been a long time coming, so.
Yeah, I think we all would agree, it's a great plan, you know, it's a matter of, you know, timing and doability, you know, we're monitoring what we will have for revenue for next year to see, you know, what we can support moving forward, but we had to have a plan in place, we had to know where we were going so that we could budget accordingly and so we'll know more as we get into the spring and revenue becomes more apparent. I'm just really pleased we have a plan in place for the, for the fine arts. This is something our community's been asking for, for a number of years and I feel like we're moving in the right direction now.
Yeah, I agree and I think that if you can take the fine arts programs and tie them in ways that help with mental awareness and mental issues in schools and behavior in schools, then you're taking and putting it all in one investment. So I think that's a good route to take for that. So, I agree.
Thank you all so much.
Great job, Kathryn.
Thank you so much.
Next, Kristen Morrissey is going to give us a legislative and a chamber committee's update.
All righty, Sandy's going to be my vanna, thank you. All right, what's she brings up? So lots going on at the session, it's, today is Tuesday, the 10th, 12th is CineDi, so, not CineDi, excuse me, crossover day. So there's a lot going on today. Had the joy of watching the Senate today for hours as they discuss. So we'll start out with the, kind of the big topic is the budget that is, they get out of the one side and is in the House in discussion. You've probably heard in the news, they, this is, we knew this was kind of coming, that the raise that they had proposed, at least the governor had proposed at 2,000 is now knocked down to $1,000 this year and instead of starting July 1, it is proposed to start September 1. And I say potentially the remaining $1,000 next year because that's the promise, but, you know, we'll see how that goes next year. So again, this is not passed yet, this is still in process. They were commenting that they were fully funding counselors at the 1 to 450 ratio for all students and I put that as "fully" in quotes because as you all know, one of our top strategic plans, ideas is that we really feel that needs to be lowered to 1 to 250, so.
And that was recommended too?
Yeah, the national recommendation.
Association, yeah.
So it's good, but we really would love to see that change for a number of reasons. So 2% rate for nurses, 5% to transportation and nutrition workers and it doesn't mean, my understanding, it's just 5% in the funding, but as, you know, we get, I think Larry, was a million we get towards transportation and a million and a half towards nutrition.
It's a million for nurses and a million for transportation.
For transportation, so it's, what's very much-
It cost us a lot more than that.
Cost us a lot more than that, yes, correct. I ran the numbers and it's, it's a proportion of what we spend, so again, happy to have it. This was in the funding for one AP and for pre-reduced and a STEM and then as far as we know, the basic, the rest of the QBEs fully funded, so we are pleased. That would be our third year in a row for QBEs.
Yeah, correct.
So that, for that, we are grateful. So we'll see where this goes. We'll have to figure out when it comes to budget how that impacts us as well when it comes to 2,000 versus 1,000 and all that, so. The big one for today that the Senate voted on was the voucher bill, also known as Special Needs Scholarship Act, it's the changing of what's out there existing. It was a lively discussion, 33 to 22 the vote was. This basically expands the existing special needs voucher to include 504 students. And I've listed a lot of the details here, the pros and cons, I've listed a mixture. I think the part that frustrates people the most is the unknown. 504s are not currently monitored by the state, we know how many we have, but they don't know how many there are and this would be an increase of funding for them. an increase of funding for them, even though they're calling it a shifting of funds for people that would take this. One, they don't know how many it would be. And then also, it cocks out the local fair share if the state is to pay their portion, that the QBE number is prior to taking out the local fair share. So it's actually going to cost them more. Where is that money going to come from, especially when they don't know how many it is? Let's go down to the next slide, Sandy. One of the things that's challenging with this bill is once a student gets a 504 plan or chooses to take this money, they're permanently busted. There's nothing in the bill that says, okay, if they're better after a year, whatever their problem may be, there's nothing that says go back and check. So if they get this voucher and this 504 as a kindergartner, they can go all the way through K-12. And the funding that would be associated with that is higher, my understanding, at the kindergarten level than it is if you receive it at a higher level. So they get this higher amount of money for the duration. So that was one of the frustrations. There's also an annual report. I've read the annual report. It's actually pretty interesting, but it is an annual report. So there's no progress reports. There's no comparison of how this child was doing versus how they're doing in a private school. There's just, there's not a lot of accountability that we traditionally have in a public school side. There was a comment from actually one of the senators who was in opposition to this, that she felt it would enable affluent companies to, I'm sorry, affluent families to actually, the doctor, a doctor can write a note that says the child needs a 504, and she felt that affluent families would be doing that. She goes, "I've done it for my own kid prior to this bill." And she said, she just felt that basically they could then get a $3,000, $4,000 voucher to go to a private school where they could supplement the rest of the money and send their child with someone who was not of that means. One couldn't afford the doctor to get the note, and then even if they got the money, where are they going to take the kid? So it was a lot of interesting discussions. I felt for the families who were in need of this, so it's, there's a lot of pros and cons, but that's another, that could be a four-day conversation. House Bill 444, the dual enrollment bill, that was, started last year. It was tweaked this year. Funds from the state, there were so many people that were encouraged to do dual enrollment that it just was a runaway. So they had to cut back on the number of students doing it, the amount of money that's being spent. The nice thing is, as much as we were concerned last year, they did listen to school systems and added in some qualifiers. So our kids that were already in progress, already had dual enrollment plans, they could continue on. So the limits aren't for the kids that are juniors and seniors. It's more for the kids that are starting into it. And they did put some accountability. If a kid's withdrawn twice, then they're not going to be able to get the money again. It has to be for core courses. So, of course, we'd love to have it be wide open, but the real idea is there's so much, only so much money. So the parameters that they have put in were, I think, a pretty good negotiation. Not everybody's happy, but I think that it was, there's some good compromises in this bill. And that is 367, the Governor's Assessment Bill. I think, I don't know anybody who's not happy about this one. This one, removes five of the seven milestones, oh, I spelled assessments wrong. My pet peeve on that.
That's definitely-
Yeah, it's not me. Beyond the federal requirements. We had, Georgia requires more than the feds, so removing some of those is going to make a lot of parents happy, removing four EOCs. It also puts the timeframe for the milestones, the last 25 days of school, I think it is.
Did you know, is that right?
Last 25. So I think that's, so, this one is, seems to be moving along pretty well. Tim Tebow is back again, new number, same idea, House Bill of 1055. I think that everybody understands what that one's about and the pros and cons. That is in rules, it's, not sure if it's going to go out. It's really close, so I don't know if it's going to make it all the way out this year, but if it's not, we'll probably see it again next year. School impact fees, I saved one of the best for last. I think we're all a little excited about this. This, our Senator Dozel introduced a bill. We went down to the state, state education and youth and spoke in favor of that. It requires a constitutional amendment in addition to the bill. It's for, our system's fast-growing like ourselves, 15% over five years or 10% over four on the track to hit the 15%, which is very consistent for us over the years. It's, was a very close vote. It's still a very uphill battle, even though it's so tailored to us versus the original bill from 2015. Lot of pushback, you know, constitutional amendment should never be easy. So I appreciate that. GSBA spoke in favor of the amendment. They understood our need. I think the fact that it's so detailed to a county like us, where it excludes others like Gwinnett is going to be a hurdle. The good thing is, for a slow-growing county who would feel this is detrimental to their economy, since they wouldn't be eligible, hopefully the representatives in those areas would be more open to passing this this time because it would in no way affect a slow-growth county. So at this point, we'll see. Again, it's made it much farther, I think, politically than it has in the past, but it's still a long ways to go. Any questions on that? My stuff.
Yeah, before you move on to the chamber update, I just wanted to say, I want to appreciate you keeping in constant contact with the members of our delegation. That's a very positive relationship for us. And our delegation is very responsive to the school system. You know, we might not 100% agree on every bill that comes out there, but they absolutely do listen to us and consider our point of view, and I really do appreciate that. I mean, if we call, they answer, and I think they feel like if they call us and they need some data or need us to run some numbers for them, that we will do that as well. So it's a very good working relationship, even if we don't 100% agree on every issue.
Yeah, they do, you're like, they do reach out regularly, and it is much appreciated.
Again, I want to thank Kristin because she went downtown. In fact, it got canceled one day and had, you know, it's last minute, you have to go down there. And it was live streamed, so I got to watch. And she gave them a lot of detail in a very small amount of time. And I want to thank, I know Larry was involved in Jennifer, maybe some other staff that put together all the numbers for her, and it really came across very well. So again, thank you for all your work.
And Ms. Adams, she was there, she testified as well, so thank you. That was much appreciated from the parent perspective, so it was good. All right, next topic is chamber committee updates. And you want to talk about data. Several years ago, myself and Dr. Bearden were invited to be on a committee. The school system has a longstanding relationship with the Chamber of Commerce and the county. And so this was an effort years ago, the county was updating their economic development plan. And it was a long process. They start by going out and, on the committee, we helped to select a vendor who would review the process and make recommendations, and that was called the Economic Development Committee. And then there was a subcommittee, EDSG it was called. It has gone through a number of changes over the years, and that main group, which includes members from the Chamber of Commerce, the school system, higher ed, the counties, also specifically the economic development people, and that has had a project to basically do everything we can together, cohesively, to do anything we can to increase economic development in the county, which is really aimed at increasing our commercial tax base. Right now, we're a bedroom committee, about 70% residential, and that puts a lot of the tax burden on our residents. So this effort was to help our tax base. It was also to help create jobs within Forsyth County, not only for our students that graduate, but also to help create jobs in our county so that our people, like my husband, who get up every morning and drive downtown, the perimeter downtown, can try to have a job that's in here and keep us here, help with our transportation issues, and then also keep us home. So it has a lot of reasons why the committee was put together. So the main group was called Economic Development, which has now transferred to the Forward Forsyth Initiative. So that is, they, the data we get, the numbers are, is a lot of what we do. That committee also created some subgroups. There was the marketing committee. One of the recommendations of the plan for the economic development plan was to work on our image, not only our history of our image in Forsyth County, but just to show that we have a great working relationship for things like the Alliance Academy. Valerie Lowe has been very instrumental in work on this. And it's not just our academy, it's all of our traditional high schools, our career pathways, how they align with what the industry needs. So it's been a real combination of efforts. So one of the subgroup was the marketing. They've created logos. They are working on a website. I mean, there's, I've mentioned this, newspaper articles in the trade magazines, this was actually one about Alliance Academy, which is awesome. There is also a, was there a branding initiative committee that I was on? That one completed our work last fall, which was, included a logo. There is, like I said, data, like, there is a brochure, Economic Development Guide, which is, this is last year's version. We're currently updating this year's version with new data on our growth and numbers like that. I'm trying to think what else. There's a tourism committee. The tourism committee, again, tourism is obviously, the number of people that come in here and spend their SPOSS dollars is also big for the economy. 80% of our tourism is sports and 20% is film and other things. So we're making sure there's enough hotels, we're advertising. So there's just a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. We had a meeting of the Forward Forsyth, the main group meeting, I think it was yesterday, trying to look to, now that we've got all this stuff in place, how to, what's the next level? So there's a lot of work right now with the Development Authority. The Development Authority is under the, they're appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and they have power to help with bonds for development. So we're really trying to look at what their authority is. We've been going to training so that we better understand as a board what incentives can be done and then what the Development Authority can do. So there's still a lot of work going on in the direction of this whole movement. So it's a lot of meetings, it's a lot of data. It's very interesting. But I really, just to get an idea of who's involved, I meant to say this earlier. The county commissioners, Laura Simonson right now, Molly Cooper are on the committee, Eric Johnson, the county manager, Vivini Bakili, who is the county's economic development director, David Seago, formerly of EOM, Soni MC, Larry Duckworth, who is on the Development Authority, Doug Jenkins, Dr. Bearden, myself, James McCoy, Robert Long from the Chamber of Commerce, Joan Tolleson, Rumen Bolin. So it's a real mixture of everybody in the community, and it's, it's got a long ways to go, but I think we're making some efforts. That was a long sentence.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? All right. If ever a board want to sit in a meeting, there's plenty.
There's plenty of meetings. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is our GSBA legislative positions and the delegate summary, summer assembly. Did anybody have a chance to look at the legislative positions and make any changes that we need to bring forward? I know Kristin, last year, again, went over them extensively, and we didn't find anything that we disagreed with totally and wanted to bring up for Forsyth County. And Darla, do you still want to be our delegate if you want?
I can, yeah.
I think we have to name an alternate, just because the form asks us for one, you know, but.
I did get an email this morning to be on the Government Operational Committee like I was on last year, which is basically the subgroup of people that look at the legislative priorities and whether to make any changes, which is another meeting to make, which I don't mind doing that. I just see if I have to be the one to also go to Savannah. I mean, Savannah's, so I'll reread the email to see that, but.
Okay, okay.
That's our opportunity to have a little bit more input on that, the legislative priorities.
Right, right. And then you, gives you ideas, too, if there's something we want to come forward with or support when it comes to Savannah. Okay. Well, we'll vote on those things next week on the agenda. Any future agenda items? Okay, hearing none at this time. Our action item for night, for tonight, is Munter's Settlement Agreement, and Matt Work is going to present that to us.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, I did send an email kind of giving more detail on this a couple weeks ago about the settlement agreement. This is an agreement between, pending between Munter's Corporation and Forsyth County Schools. We've gone through multiple back and forth with this. This has been approved through multiple attorneys and things of that nature, that it's in the best interest of the school districts, so I would recommend that we forward this.
Yeah, I just want to say before I make a recommendation, Matt did a lot of really good work behind the scenes to get us to a place where we felt very comfortable with the agreement. Our attorneys have reviewed it, and they agree it's a good deal for us, and we appreciate, you know, Munter's stepping up to the plate and owning up to their responsibility, and we just feel like we're in a really good place. So I would recommend approval.
We have a recommendation? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion from Tom and a second from Kristin. Any further discussion, questions?
No, I would agree that you did a wonderful job, and you can see the hard work that you put in it, in the details.
I think so.
And I've been involved in two of these before in the past with the government, and it's always the government comes out at the bottom unless you have somebody that's there to represent the government entity, and you did a great job, so thank you for that.
And it also needs to be noted, too, Munter's is a great corporation. They have been really helpful with us. We've done business for many, many years. The equipment is very good. So it's just, again, it's one of those things that you move forward and we just keep moving.
Good job.
Well, actually, I was, I sent Dr. Bearden a note this morning. In my Forward Forsyth meeting yesterday, there was a gentleman there, developer, and he made a comment that he had worked with you, and he felt that you were very good at trying to save the system money, specifically, not related to this, so.
I greatly appreciate that.
Just out of the blue, he brought that up, so.
Appreciate it again.
I think he said you were frugal.
Frugal.
Frugal is a great word.
There you go.
That was a good word, okay. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. At this time, Dr. Bearden would like to give us an update on the coronavirus.
Yeah, this wasn't on the agenda, but I just feel like we should talk about this for a moment because every community, not only in our state but country and around the world, is talking about the coronavirus. So I just want to be clear, we have not received any recommendation from local, state, or federal officials that we should be closing schools. In fact, they're recommending that we do not close schools. And that conversation comes up on a daily basis from parents, members of our community, and certainly understand why. We monitor this on a day-to-day situation. It's very fluid, as we all know. I get updates every single day from the Department of Health, from Homeland Security, from the Department of Education. Our governor has been very transparent with his press conferences. In fact, the information that he gives to the public in those press conferences is the same information we're getting as a school system on a day-to-day basis. We're not getting anything that the public's not getting directly from the governor's office, which I really appreciate. Having said all that, you know, we do have to be prepared. And we have been working very hard over the last week to 10 days to make sure we were prepared in the event that we were directed that we needed to close a school, a cluster of schools, or the entire school system. We all know that, you know, while we hope that doesn't happen, it's possible that someday we might be in that position. So fortunately for us, we have been working in the virtual world for about six years now. We've had inclement weather days. Our teachers, our staff are very prepared to teach virtually if we need it to do that. And so we're preparing in the event. We hope we do not have to implement those plans, but if we do, we feel like we're in a very good place. Friday is a professional development day for our teachers. All of our schools will be reviewing their virtual learning plans.